Recording in progress.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Present.
Councilmember Hill.
Present.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Yaren Scalari.
Present.
Mayor Kate.
Present. All five of us are here this evening. We, I invite the city attorney, Rob Epstein, to report out in closed session both today's, as well as one that was held on May 5th.
Right. Thank you, Mayor Kate. Good evening. There was no reportable action taken at the closed session that resumed on May 5th after the regular meeting, so no reportable action that night. And then as for tonight's closed session, there also was no reportable action taken.
Thank you. So good evening and welcome. We are thrilled that you are joining us, whether you're here in person or watching online. I always like to start our meeting with thanking city staff. You work so tirelessly and incredibly to support our community every single day. You are truly the backbone, so thank you. So it's springtime, and that means baseball. And I'm delighted that the San Rafael Pacifics have their home opener this Thursday. The Pacifics, if you don't know, are a minor league professional independent team that plays in the Pecos League. They debuted at Albert Park in 2012. And if you haven't caught a game yet, please play it on trying to do it this year. And if you can make it on Friday, May 30th, I urge you to show up, as that will be a night that the San Rafael city employees are being honored. And as part of honoring San Rafael employees, we have a San Rafael employee who will be singing the National Anthem, and another employee who will be throwing out the first pitch. So the anthem singer, we're not going to pick by chance, they actually volunteered, a good thing. So thank you to Liz Pace. She's the lead communications dispatcher for the police department, so she'll be singing the National Anthem. As for who will throw out the first pitch, I am going to draw a name out of this hat. These are people that have expressed interest, and if their name is drawn, they will throw out the first pitch, and then we'll have two weeks to practice, make it over the plate. Okay, so we will find, oh my gosh, there's so many in here, and they're, oh, you made it nice and big. Damian Oyobio, Finance Department, he is going to be throwing out the first pitch. So someone text him so he can get out there right now and start practicing with his kids. So fantastic. We have a short agenda tonight, but before we get to it, we like to include a land acknowledgement, and this is in addition to the work that we do on an ongoing basis with the tribe. We thank the original caretakers of this land. San Rafael is traditionally home to the Cozumelwak people. Many of today are tribal citizens of the Federated Indians of Great Rancheria, and we honor their continuing involvement and stewardship practices that benefit us all. Thank you. I will now turn to the city clerk to describe how people can participate this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Tonight's meeting is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube for members of the public wishing to provide public comment, displayed on the podium and the projector as a timer to help you stay within the two-minute timeframe. You're invited, though not required, to say which part of Santa Fe that you live in, or if you're from outside of Santa Fe. Viewers may request reasonable accommodations to provide public comment virtually. For more information about that, or if you experience any technical difficulties, you can email me at city.clerk@cityofsanatelfe.org. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll turn to the city manager for her city manager report.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, community leaders, and residents. We are celebrating a very special person this evening, and we're going to do that in a few minutes, but I just want to take the floor and send some personal appreciations to Reverend Jan. Thank her for her incredible many years of service, and I have called upon Reverend Jan both personally and professionally in my time here in San Rafael, and her heart and commitment to this city is nothing but short of miraculous. So not only the work that she's done attending to our most, people in the most griefed, in the most horrific circumstances, but also, little-known fact for those of you who know Reverend Jan, I don't know how many times I've come into the office and found a personal note sitting on my desk, for no other reason than just to appreciate me, and flowers sometimes, like, so she's a very, very special person, and we will miss her around here. So thank you so much, Reverend Jan. We are also celebrating this week National Emergency Management Services Week, so in honor of our fire department, our firefighter paramedics who serve our city and surrounding areas, which includes CSA 13 and 19 and Marinwood. These incredibly brave individuals tirelessly respond to emergencies, they provide critical care and comfort in times of need. We so appreciate their dedication and their service, so on behalf of the city, thank you for that and your vital role that you play in keeping our community safe and cared for. It's also another celebration, National Public Works Week, so we have something on the consent calendar acknowledging that. I also want to express my deep appreciation for our Public Works team. They don't just fill potholes, they do way, way, much more than that. They are first responders in their own right, from maintaining our streets to storm drains. They're the ones that we call in the middle of the night when there's a tree down and a storm, and they do a lot to keep the community safe as well. So, oh, we're also having, Public Works and Director Miller are hosting an open house event on May 21st this week from 12:00 to noon at 11:00, 1:11 more few. It's open to the public, and it's an opportunity to look at all the incredible fun vehicles they have, meet the staff, hear about the projects that are happening, and more about the essential services they provide. I want to make an announcement about a temporary prohibition on camping at City Hall and Canalways property under my authority as your city manager. I temporarily banned camping at City Hall from May 19th to June the 9th, and at the Canalways property from May 27th to June 17th. And this is specific to allow our wildfire mitigation teams to complete critical and planned Zone Zero work, vegetation management work. This temporary prohibition is critical to ensure the safety of the unhoused residents that are currently there. We're actively offering shelter and services to those individuals to ensure that they are supported during this time. We have an enforcement plan for illegal food vending in the canal, so I wanted to also acknowledge and appreciate the incredible amount of work that our code enforcement team, police department, have been doing to address this, this urgent priority. So this week enforcing state and city laws, the current enforcement mechanisms that we have, we'll also have Spanish-speaking police officers out doing the enforcement that will take place Tuesday through Friday between the hours of 5:00 and 10:00 p.m. over the next few weeks. These timelines were selected not only based on peak hours, but also direct community feedback. Officers will distribute materials on how to obtain vending permits, while we continue to explore longer-term solutions, and we are currently evaluating the city's illegal food vending ordinance, and we'll plan to bring that for the council's consideration to increase our enforcement tools in the summer. We are also partnering with the county's Environmental Health Services Department. They bring additional enforcement tools, and we are planning a joint operation with them on the evenings of June the 5th and the 6th. I want to announce that at the next council meeting on June 2nd at 5:45 at the steps of City Hall, we will be celebrating Pride Month with our annual pride flag raising. We will have remarks by Mayor Kate and also Reverend Dr. Janie Spar, who has been working in this space previously with the Spar Center, and has just recently opened a new 501(c)(3) operation to support and provide services to our LGBTQ+ community. There's also a Second Annual Pride Art Walk Puzzle Contest that the San Rafael Business Improvement District is hosting. So the storefronts will be decorated. This year, they're honoring the icon Harvey Milk. From June 1st to the 30th, there'll be some sort of like puzzle contests where you can find hidden words in the storefronts and win prizes. So if you want more information about that, you can go to downtownsanatelfe.org.
Thank you. I'll turn to my colleagues to report out on their meetings they've attended. I'll start with the vice mayor.
Thank you. Last week was just an amazing week. So many things came together, some things decades in the making. So I'm just going to go through it chronologically, so you can understand how I live my life. On Tuesday, on Tuesday, it was the Central Marin Sanitation Agency. I know you all probably don't worry about your wastewater treatment plant, that's because we do. And we approved our budget, it's entirely balanced, and we have a 10-year forecast for our capital needs. On Wednesday, it was a big day, three times congratulations, three different levels, at our State of the City event. First level, congratulations to the Chamber and all the businesses that participate in the Chamber and that were part of the award presentation at the State of the City. Second level, congratulations to our Employee of the Year, Team of the Year. It was so great to see everyone there and enjoying that celebration. And of course, the Public Service Award, that's my favorite meeting of the year, to be a part of that award. And then, of course, it ended with the third congratulation of that night, which is to the mayor who gave a wonderful State of the City keynote address that everyone was very proud of, and made us all want to work even harder. But that was just Wednesday. Then we rolled into Thursday, and it was the San Rafael Library Foundation's annual dinner, donor dinner. Director Quofford made a presentation there about our plans for Measure P, that's the funding for our new combined library and community center. Always exciting when you're, everyone was, what was the word? Giddy. Giddy with delight at planning the new structure and how all of the great things is going to bring to our community. And that very night, less than 24 hours after the State of the City keynote, our mayor was once again giving a second keynote address to the Library Foundation, which was very well received, although it was preceded by an unfortunate mathematical error. It was not her, it was not her, it was not hers, an unnamed person was not aware of how long the city of Santa Fe had existed, and gave our mayor credit for even more years than we had waited for our first, our first woman mayor. So that was two keynotes in 24 hours for the mayor. Well done. Friday, you see, we're just getting warmed up here. Friday was S.R. Sand in the morning at 9:00, and after that, I was, oh, S.R. Sand, we also approved our budget, and because we could plan on what we were going to be receiving from the Central Marin Sanitation Agency in the form of bills. It all works together so that we can responsibly plan for all these services. After that, I was out walking with the Montecito Area Resident Association in their neighborhood, where it came to count a project by S.R. Sand. I was able to, you know, inspect that. That was, that was super fun. And I ended the week at Falkirk at a private event, but it was an absolute delight. There were people from all over the country, and they were just amazed that we had this beautiful historic structure that was a public facility, and that we had, and I was able to give them some detail as to the investments that we've had to make to keep it up and running. But it was just a delight to receive all of the compliments on Falkirk. So there you go. A whole lot of city work.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Sounds like an excellent week. We'll find out how Councilmember Kurtz's week has gone the last two weeks. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm not going to do it chronologically necessarily. Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority, it was a really important week. We approved the work plan and the budget for next year. And I'd like to, huge thanks to Chief Roman and to Quinn Gardner, who serve in those really important roles. So that is a huge accomplishment. We had, we're planning for next year, we have 22 million from the taxpayers through our Measure C to be doing our defensible space work and really a focus on Zone Zero. So more to come about that. Dividing allocation of funds for priority service grants from the county for nonprofits working in our community. Huge amount of requests and not a lot of dollars. So hard conversations, but it was good. Another shout out to Quinn Gardner and Kate Anderson for their work with Cal Fire. Cal Fire came and highlighted one of our San Rafael communities, the San Rafael Highlands area, to highlight two homes that have gone to Zone Zero. You'll be hearing me saying this a lot this next coming couple of years. And so Cal Fire did a filming of these homes, as well as an opportunity to see the open space area, and my feet got into the video. So I'm happy, my feet are a star. That was it, honestly. I attended with Mayor Kate, the Together San Rafael, was able to see the work that's happening. Maybe that will be highlighted at some point, but it was really a great opportunity, and thanks to Sean Mooney, to being able to lead that conversation and the presentation, and thanks to all the employees who participated in that. And it's really a testament to how San Rafael works better together. Homeless Policy Steering Committee, this is an opportunity where all the service providers across the county come together, and we talk, there's, it's about funding and grant distribution, as well as talking about how we all work together. And the message is really hard right now, because many of those nonprofits are, their funding is being seriously cut, which will impact all of us. And so it will be more responsibility on all of us to be working together even more. And I'll throw in, so I did also attend the San Rafael Library Foundation Dinner, which was great, and the State of the City, and then on Friday, Community Action Marin, which were sad they left San Rafael, but they have moved to Nevada to a beautiful new campus, and we had their ribbon cutting. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill?
Thank you, Mayor Kate. I had four events, and were already mentioned, so I'll mention those just briefly. But on Saturday, May 10th, I delivered a keynote address at the 2025 Asian Scholarship Fund banquet, where 11 students earned scholarships in support for seniors transitioning to higher education. The scholarships were made possible through ASF, that's Asian Scholarship Fund, and 10,000 degrees, so I want to wish congratulations to this year's recipients. I also attended the same day, May 10th, May Madness, which was outstanding, as it is every year. Special thanks, I got to spend some time with Rick Lewis, who's always a staple at these events, and one of the backbone, but also thanks to BID and all the volunteers that made that event possible, including the city for making certain that we could, all the officers that were there and the Public Works who were there to make certain that the streets were safely closed. On Tuesday, May 13th, I was in the Finance Subcommittee meeting with Mayor Kate and staff. Some of those items are going to be on tonight's agenda, so we'll see that live. I also attended the State of the City, and then on May 17th, just this past Saturday, I was at the Youth and Arts Fourth Annual C Street Celebration, which was wonderful. My two children came away with a guitar pick and a kaleidoscope, so I guess I have to get a guitar now. And it was wonderful. The celebration allowed children to draw chalk drawings all down the street, as well as many performances throughout the day celebrating different cultural heritages of our community. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Yaren Scalari?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, it's been a very busy two weeks. So Friday, May 9th, I participated with Canal Alliance and the San Francisco Foundation. They have an invitation to North Bay Funders Tour, and they basically tour all over Sonoma and Apa, and they came to San Rafael because Canal Alliance has a great project, as we all know, partnering with the city. So it was great to being able to talk to funders about the greatness of our canal and also some of the challenges. And I think they were impressed about the fact that I was there representing a city and government, because most of the places is all nonprofits. So we have like very strong nonprofits and So we have like very strong nonprofits, and I feel really good about this partnership. So hopefully, you know, some money will be coming soon. That same night, Canal Alliance as well, there was the Leadership Academy Graduation is the second one of the year. And this is basically with residents of the canal that they take a leadership class to elevate them and hopefully recruit them for our commissions and boards, but also for like public schools or just like leaders in their communities. So it's always amazingly touching to hear their stories and their strength and how much they want to give back. So I love, if you can attend to one of these leadership events, it's amazing. The Greg Borelli 35 Annual May Madness Car Show, we actually found each other. I've been going to this for, I don't know, 28 years. And a huge, huge thank you as well to the BID and Sarah Tippel, in addition to the Chamber of Commerce. The police and the fire, they have like amazing classic cars that it was really fun to see. But I saw friends and neighbors from all over San Rafael and from places as far as LA that they came to our car show. So it was a great community event. And that night, I went to Dominican to see Isabella Allende. So, and I also found some people from Spain, from the Silicon Valley, and I thought, you know, it's like we have such an international, amazing, rich city that has all these beautiful events. Anyway, I know probably I shouldn't report on that, but I was just like, we just have the best city, you know? So anyway, on Monday, May 12th, there was the Canal Promise Neighborhood Steering Committee Meeting, and that's a collaboration between the city, the county, the public schools, nonprofits, the business community. So we continue the work there, and it's amazing what's happening in the canal. On Wednesday, Mayor Kate and I had our quarterly connection with Supervisor Rodoni, attended the State of the City Dinner as well. It was great. And then my last one, while you were on the public library dinner, I was at the MC Clean Energy Board Meeting, which is not as fun, but it was great as well. And they gave a snapshot of the current strategic initiatives, including the virtual power plant, green hydrogen, responsible biomass, supplier diversity, and environmental justice. So I'm very proud to represent the city as a board member for MC. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. It really was a busy couple of weeks. I also have a few that I want to share out. So I am your representative on SMART, the Sonoma Marin Area Rapid Transit. We had a budget workshop, and you can go watch it online. It was recorded, and that budget will be brought back for adoption at our next meeting. We had a TAM Executive Committee Meeting. I am the Vice Chair of TAM, which is the Transportation Authority of Marin. We had an update on the 2025 state bills, even though they're still working their way through the legislation right now, letting us know what we might be supporting and what we might be not supporting. And there was also a reminder, the Redwood Bike Share, so those are the bikes that are out here by City Hall, there's some down by the West End, there's some down by SMART. There's a promotion going on during the month of May. So if you've been curious about doing the ride share, you can go ahead and download that Redwood Bike app, and there's a promotion on there for this current month. In addition, and this will be a good news for those that commute in and out of San Rafael, the Marin Narrows Project is getting closer to being open. And right now, it's projected to open the end of this summer. So close, getting closer. Councilmember Kurtz and I also participated in a homeless subcommittee meeting last week. We had an update on our current ordinance as well as our encampment resolution fund. In addition, City Manager Littlebitch and myself met with Marin Transit, Nancy Whelan, who is the General Manager, as well as the Board Chair Eric Lukin, to talk about 1075 East Francisco. If you recall, Marin Transit is in the process of purchasing that site to park electric buses, and we are working with them in the hopes that it's more than just a parking lot. So that conversation went well, and they're continuing to get community feedback about what that additional "and" could be on that site. I was happy to represent the city at the North Bay Leadership Lunch. Ann Richmond, who is the Chair, sorry, the General Manager of TAM, Transportation Authority of Marin, received an award. And it was similar, it was the one that Don Jebson, who, our employee, John Jebson, won last year, and it's from red tape to the red carpet. I didn't make up that title, but it basically is highlighting folks that figure out how to cut through bureaucracy to have things move more smoothly. So we know Don was able to do it, and we continue to benefit. And Ann was honored for that same award. And then this morning, San Rafael participates in the Gun Safety Collaboration, which is just what it sounds like, how do we reduce gun violence in our community as well as prevent any from occurring? We had a presentation, a clinical presentation from a doctor who's at Stanford University, and really looking at the clinical aspects of gun violence, and she provided materials to the collaborative. June 7th, which I will mention in our next meeting as well, we always support people to wear orange, and there's also a Golden Gate Bridge Walk, wearing orange is showing that you are standing in solidarity and allyship for folks that want to work to reduce gun violence, as well as people that have been on the receiving end of gun violence. And then finally, the website for the collaborative is up. There's a lot of great information on there. If you're interested in getting involved, you can go there and learn how to do that. And finally, City Manager, wanted to make sure that I mentioned our next meeting, not the next meeting, not the June meeting, the June 17th meeting is, will be canceled and we'll be rescheduling it for June 23rd. So we're just switching on Monday. It has to do with quorum issues. So my son's graduating, I'm out of town, I'm not sure what other people are doing, but we don't have a quorum. So we will be meeting on June 23rd. Of course, that will be in snapshot, and we will remind you all at the next June meeting. So that was a ton of information, but it was delivered with enthusiasm at heart, which is really what the council as well as the city manager brings to the community, in addition to the work we do on the dais. And as always, if there's any members of the public that would like to comment on what they just heard, now is your chance. So I will open the public comment on the city manager and council member reports. Not seeing any, I will close the public comment and move to the consent agenda. Is there any items that my colleagues would like to pull? Looking to the right? No. Looking to the left? No. Okay. So I will open up public comment, and I do notice that there's, the proclamation for Reverend Jan is on the consent, but we also will have public comment right before the presentation. So I would accept any public comment on the consent agenda at this time, items 4A through 4E. Okay, I will close the public comment. Request a motion on this item, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second?
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz?
Aye.
Councilmember Yorben Skoladi?
Aye.
Mayor Kate?
Aye, that motion carries 5-0. Moving right along to the special presentation, which I have to say, so I get a little cheat sheet, and at the end of it, it says break for cupcakes. I mean, what could be better than that? So we, before I read the proclamation, we do invite public comment, so if you would like to share any, I don't have to, but if you'd like to say anything, we will be presenting, I will be presenting the proclamation to Reverend Jan, but now is your opportunity if you'd like to publicly comment. Okay, the voice from the crowd was, will we be able to hear from Reverend Jan? And they, absolutely, we will. Yes, if anyone else would like to comment, now would be the time. I see District Attorney for Goli joining us.
I'm not shy. Councilmembers, thank you so much for honoring Reverend Jan. For those who don't know, I'm your district attorney here Marin, and I don't live in San Rafael, but I used to. And I've known Reverend Jan for I don't know how many decades. She was well into her career, serving as a chaplain for the Police Department when I first met her. But I heard ahead of time from my husband, who was a longtime member of the San Rafael Police Department, and sat in your chairs for a term, and all I heard was how wonderful she was and how she helped people in the community in their time of need. So I am just here to thank you for honoring her. And Reverend Jan, I just want to say, you know, you have handled yourself with such grace under things that life has dealt you, and you carry that as well as the things that you hear when you help people time after time after time for decades in their darkest hour. And you were there for them with strength and compassion and concern, and I just want to honor you for that, and I wish Reverend Jan the happiest and healthiest retirement that anyone could ever have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments they'd like to make? Okay, not seeing any, we will go ahead and do the proclamation if my colleagues will Reverend Jan, would you join me up here when I read this proclamation? And we will hand you the mic as well, but we want to brag about you for a little bit. So this is a city proclamation for Reverend Jan, whereas because of the many important contributions that you have made to the city, to San Rafael Police Department, and to countless individuals elsewhere, you are deserving of being honored and specially recognized. And for 27 years, you faithfully served the San Rafael Police Department as chaplain, providing unwavering emotional, spiritual, and compassionate support to crime victims, their family, and first responders. And whereas Reverend Jan responded to one of the nation's most tragic events, traveling to Ground Zero in the days following 9/11, attacks to minister, rescue, and recovery personnel, serving through the long hours at St. Paul's Chapel, and offering comfort to those in the midst of trauma and grief. And whereas Reverend Jan has been a guiding presence during countless critical incidents, offering words that brought peace in times of pain, and a voice that conveyed deep understanding, never leaving the side of grieving families until every need was met. And whereas Reverend Jan co-founded the First Responders Support Network, a San Rafael nonprofit dedicated to supporting first responders experiencing post-traumatic stress, and was recognized for your lifetime of service with induction into the Marin Women's Hall of Fame in 2013. And whereas over your decades of service, she has officiated at 85 weddings and provided heartfelt eulogies for fallen officers and blessed all, from homes touched by violence to cherished family pets, always meeting people where they were with empathy, humility, and grace. And whereas Jan, her presence has been an integral part of the Police Department culture, symbolizing care, stability, and trust. And your selfless dedication, sincere kindness, humor, and remarkable strength have left a lasting and a measurable impact on the Police Department members she served beside, the families she ported, supported, and the community she embraced as her own. And I'll just add, I've also been the recipient of your kindness and your support, and I know I have felt it, and we already heard from the city manager, she has felt it, and I'm sure many in here would have their own stories as well. And to be able to provide that in a world that is uncertain and unpredictable, with such consistency and kindness and compassion, we are so blessed to have had you here for 27 years, and you will be missed, and your presence will be forever, ever felt. So on behalf of the entire community, I, Kate Collin, do warmly express the deep gratitude and appreciation to you for everything that you have done.
Thank you, and thank you for those of you that came. Thank you so much. Thank you for your kind words, and over there. And I just wanted to say, I feel overwhelmed. Do not cry. I feel overwhelmed and so appreciative of this honor. And, you know, since we are in this building, I wanted to say that it has been an honor to be called, to do what I do. And of course, I love what I do. It's a passion, if you hadn't noticed. And when I came to this building, you know, and answered those calls, people were so gracious and so welcoming, and it meant the world, because every time you or someone in this building called me, it's such a gift to me, because it's validating and it helped me be part of your family, you know? And so I just wanted to say, all of you, and boy, I include everybody up there, standing up there in the back, all of you do what you do so well. You do it so well. And so I feel honored and privileged to know you. I mean that. And again, so, so thankful for the honor that you gave me. Thank you so much. You are dear, you know? I don't know why I always feel like saying amen at the end.
You can say amen. You can say amen, so. And with that, we are going to break for cupcakes. Yes, so do join us. Yeah, so do join us.
So back to the negotiation.
Yeah.
What I was talking to you about the last time. Like.
Would you look at what we wrote up?
Thank you all. We have resumed the city council meeting after a fantastic break for cupcakes, after celebrating Reverend Jan. We have one important agenda item tonight. It is the preliminary citywide proposed budget for fiscal year 2526. I see Director Navasio has joined us, and I will turn it over to him.
Paul, mind if I make a couple of opening comments?
Sorry, city manager, I apologize.
No, 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 no worries. I wanted to start off by thanking the folks here that have worked tirelessly for months and months on this budget. So not only Paul and his incredible finance team, our directors, managers, and staff across the departments who have put a comprehensive analysis of their current budgets and accomplishments, as well as assisting finance in developing the proposed budget that's before you tonight, as well as the public works team for the development of their capital improvement program. I wanted to mention a few things as it relates to the city council's goals and objectives, which we are aligning and tying to our budget proposal this year. So at the city council's retreat in December of 2024, the council approved a new strategic planning process. And at our next council meeting on June the 2nd, we'll be presenting our new three-year strategic plan that spans fiscal years 2025 to 28, which in its current draft form includes seven priority focus areas, 29 goals, and 107 objectives. This is in addition to all of the other work that the city does on a day-to-day basis in providing services to the community. So from a process perspective, upon adoption of the three-year strategic plan, staff will work cross-departmentally on developing seven annual work plans that tie to each one of those priority focus areas, which will outline the specific initiatives and projects that staff will use to achieve the council's goals and objectives. These work plans will be brought to the council for adoption in the next few months. This new strategic planning approach serves to accomplish a few things, including aligning our budget process to our strategic planning process to ensure there is adequate funding to deliver on those goals and objectives. Additionally, it adds transparency and supports alignment among city staff, the city council, and the community on our priorities. And as emerging priorities shift and occur throughout the year, as they always do in the business of local government, we will use these work plans to make recommendations to the council on how we might prioritize our projects based on available resources and staff capacity. So just really wanted to point out that that's coming at the next council meeting. The budget that's been developed directly aligns with the achievement of those objectives. So I'll turn it over to Director Navasio.
Thank you, Christine. Good evening, Mayor Kate, members of the council. Yes, so tonight is the, I guess, presentation of our preliminary proposed budget for next fiscal year. As noted, based on discussion and feedback, this evening, we'll be back at the meeting of June 2nd, hopefully for formal action. So no action is being asked of the council this evening. I'll also just, we'll highlight that we provided a preview of the proposed budget at a recent finance subcommittee meeting. Admittedly, there have been some revisions and refinements since that, so I will attempt to highlight those as they come up. And also, as was the case last year, there may well be some additional refinements between now and when this budget is back before the council on June 2nd. To the extent that's the case, we'll definitely highlight those for the council and the public. So the purpose this evening is to give the council and the public sort of a overview of the budget and its various components. The recommendations are included in the budget. And importantly, how it positions the city for the upcoming fiscal year and the foreseeable future in terms of our goal of kind of fiscal stewardship, fiscal stability, and as the city manager said, aligning our resources with the councils and communities' priorities. No small task. The agenda item 6A is in the agenda, is in the packet. The presentation tonight is going to largely follow the outline. In fact, there's less detail in here than is in your staff report, and we'll just try to summarize the key points, and then get into some discussion and questions. I have a brief outline here in terms of what drives the overall budget process. We have embedded in this agenda item an abbreviated third-quarter budget update for the results through the current fiscal year through the end of March, which allows us to update projections through the end of this year, which is a foundational piece to then what the next fiscal year holds. And then we'll quickly summarize at a high level the proposed 2526 budget, the specific funding recommendations within the general fund, and highlighting some of the funding recommendations in the other funds. We'll then look at if this budget were to be approved by the council on June 2nd, what our reserve outlook looks like in terms of maintaining prudent reserves and contingencies, a little bit about the outlook beyond 2526. There are a few personnel and staffing recommendations in this. I will then hand it over to Joanna, who will review for the council the 2526 Capital Improvement Program budget, which is a significant component of the overall budget. And then we'll wrap up with just next steps to get the budget hopefully over the finish line on June 2nd, and then plays for us at the start of the new fiscal year in July. You know, just, it's worth saying that the, you know, the budget process, there's a lot of goals and objectives for the process itself. And that is to make sure that we are allocating resources sufficient to meet the demands of our ongoing and recurring programs and services across all city departments that serve the community, try to do those in a way that, you know, both provides budget flexibility, addresses city councils' goals and objectives, but also maintains a prudent budget. And part of that is allocating, sort of ensuring that recurring and ongoing needs are covered by ongoing and recurring sources of revenue, trying to limit the allocation of one-time needs and reserves and fund balance to one time. Otherwise, you risk building in a structural deficit that is never a good idea, but sometimes happens. We're also looking at the budget, not just one year at a time, but always looking at it within a multi-year planning horizon so that we're clear that decisions that are made with this budget, how they impact future budgets about that. And we've talked about maintaining prudent reserves, critically important anytime, but particularly when you have an uncertainty over the future, whether it's the general economic conditions in terms of volatility, whether, you know, it's the bustin' booms of the economy, housing. More recently, a lot of tension is being placed also on uncertainty coming from our nation's capital in terms of federal policies and actions related that have direct impacts to local government in terms of our access to grants for a lot of our infrastructure projects, some of the policies that could impact just the general economy and consumers. And we are so dependent, as you'll see again, on property and sales tax revenues, that those things do have direct impacts on local government, even if they're not immediate or obvious. And so we're cognizant of that in this budget. And hopefully, and also this presentation is part of being transparent and sharing the information. And so with that, hope to build, sort of continue to build trust and confidence in the city's ability to manage its resources on a going-forward basis. So I'm going to step back, just a couple of slides here on the third-quarter budget update. This starts, I believe, on page three of the staff report. Summarizing quickly, the all-funds revenues through the end of March was $117.89 million, about 60% of this year's budgeted revenues of $195.6 million. On the expenditures, including encumbrances, at the end of March, they stood at $163.5 million, which is about 70% of the all-funds budget of $232.4 million, that's the amended budget. The general fund, the revenues through the first nine months of the fiscal year stood at $62 million, about 60% of our amended budget and expenditures at about just under 75%. What I would like to highlight on this slide, and it's kind of described briefly in the staff report, is based on these results, we've updated our year-end projections for the city's general fund. The, we've actually downgraded our revenue estimate through the end of this year. And while the projection would still result in roughly a half-million-dollar favorable variance to the budget, at mid-year, that number was $1.3 million to the good. So almost entirely because of a, starting to see a flattening of sales tax revenues, this is about $800,000 less than what we had projected based on the first six months of the fiscal year's result. On the expenditure side, at mid-year, we had anticipated about $1.5 million in budgetary saving coming in under budget, mostly from personnel costs. You heard a presentation, I believe, at the last council meeting about our efforts to fill vacancies, and been very successful in that regard. Personnel costs now look like they're tracking slightly under budget, but not as, to the extent that they have been in recent years and even through the first six months of the year. So we are still projecting about $1 million savings relative to budget. Line share of that is going to be in the non-personnel category. Long story short, we do expect to grow our general fund fund balance by about $1.5 million relative to the budget by the end of the fiscal year. And that's an important number, because that will play directly into some of the funding recommendations, again, for one-time needs. But this allows us to address some needs in anticipation of having a little bit of budget flexibility due to the this year's year-end results. I'm going to jump to a summary. And this is, table is been taken from the information that's in Exhibit 1 of the agenda packet. And it just summarizes our sources and uses for 2526. Total revenues and transfers in are $189.6 million. And the budget that we're presenting this evening contemplates appropriations and transfers of $191.7 million. Just leave it at that, and see if there's questions when we get to that. This is a slide that shows the proposed 2526 budget in relation to last year's adopted budget. It does show just a slight increase in general fund expenditures, some decreases in special revenue and in capital projects. And that is specifically related to the appropriations that supported the Capital Improvement Program budget in 2425 in relation to a, I would say, more modest allocation. And we'll cover that when we get into the CIP. A lot of the work in next year's CIP is actually going to be a continuation and carryover of funding that was in this year's budget. So that's why you see a bit of a sort of decrease across from year to year. These next two slides just give a summary of our general fund, general fund revenues at $106.5 million. This is a little over 2.5% growth from prior year, which is a good thing, although that is actually a fairly modest increase across all of our revenues and all of our revenue sources. Property taxes seem to still be performing relatively well. We work with both our consultants, and in this case, with the county, on projecting property tax revenues, about a 4% revenue growth. Sales and use tax is projected, however, to remain largely flat. I'm hoping that that's a conservative estimate, and we don't have to, excuse me, downgrade that further. Other revenues just range across the board from, you know, 3%, 5%, 6%, 7% increases. What I'll just highlight on this chart again is, for the purposes of the general fund, how a full 70% of the general fund budget is supported by property and sales taxes. And that includes the voter-approved Measure E and Measure R that the budget continues to be heavily, heavily dependent on. And it shows the sort of portfolio of other revenue sources that make up the balance. On the expenditure side, it's actually a little bit lower. We have a $1.1 million reduction. We have a $1.1 million reduction, largely due to fewer transfers in this budget. Last year, we allocated in excess of $10 million of general fund to not just support programs, but allocated to other funding needs, and we'll show a comparison of that. And so I mentioned earlier the general fund revenue growth of, you know, two, little over 2.5%. The personnel costs in the general fund alone are increasing by $4.5 million in this year's budget, and so that's just a key point to make, largely, well, almost entirely as a result of the negotiated labor agreements that the city entered into last year. This budget will be year two of a three-year labor agreement. And as we anticipated, but perhaps maybe a little bit more than we did, just the personnel cost growth alone outpaces the revenue growth, so that requires the budget to sort of be tightened and reallocated a little bit in order to provide for that. And on this pie chart again, I will note, as is typical of most full-service cities, but for San Rafael in particular, our two public safety departments, police and fire, account for 55% of the general fund budget. When we add the Public Works Department, our third largest, a full 70% of the city's general fund budget is allocated to those three departments. Although with all due respect to our chiefs, I always say that police and fire don't have a monopoly on public safety. There's a lot of programs and activities across other departments that are also critically important to ensuring the, you know, safety needs of the, of the community. Editorial comment, sorry. So let's move into the budget recommendations for 2526. And again, these are outlined in the, in the staff report. This chart again compares the current 2425 budget to what is before you in terms of the proposed 2526. Again, mentioned 106 million in revenue, 113 million, 113.356 in appropriations, which includes 104.6 million in essentially operating expenditures, supporting all of our programs and services and personnel costs. And we're also proposing $8.7 million in, in transfers. That's made up really of two components. I'll preview a slide that I think is coming right up. 2.7 million of that transfer is the general fund supporting other operating funds, most notably the Recreation Revolving Fund. 2.4 million of general fund dollars is allocated to support the Recreation Fund. I will note that while there's been some increases in that fund, that transfer is flat from the current year, so we're not proposing and at this time not needing to increase that, but that's something to keep an eye on going forward. So you have 2.7 million in operating transfers, so you got the rec fund. The other transfer that's in that category is the Measure E revenue that comes in. One-third of Measure E is allocated for essential facilities. We cover the debt service on the bonds for the projects that have been completed, most notably the Public Safety Building. Those are covered in the general fund. There's about $290,000 of remaining Measure E dollars that are transferred to the capital fund to fund future projects. So those are the two items in that category. And then, it's important, we'll highlight this again, this budget proposes allocating $6 million of general fund dollars, mostly from available fund balance. It's 4 million that was available at the end of the last fiscal year, plus, again, the 1.5 million that we're anticipating this year. And these are proposed to be allocated, as shown on this slide, 2.5 million to our liability fund to handle significant increases in our insurance premiums, largely due to liability and claims insurance, as well as insurance and reserve against claims. We're proposing, again, to transfer in this budget 1.5 million to our capital fund to help support our capital program, but specifically those needs that don't have dedicated funding sources and a lot of our deferred maintenance and other items. Another million dollars to, essentially, to support our Streets and Roads program and pavement maintenance to, because the gas tax does not generate sufficient revenue to just even keep our streets at current conditions, let alone improve them. And then a million dollars to the Vehicle Replacement Fund, so that's the $6 million. What this nets out to is essentially, net of that $6 million of transfers, we would be spending down about $862,000 of general fund dollars, spending down our fund balance, and you'll see shortly that that is entirely allocated for one-time needs. So we're not using the reserves or the fund balance for recurring, recurring services. This is a summary of the general fund funding recommendations. There's just under $450,000 being allocated to ongoing and recurring needs. And as I would note on this chart, half of that are for costs that the city actually does not have control over, so these are fees that come from us from the county. We have the Marin General Services Agency, our street lighting contracts, animal services contracts. And so those are covered here in this allocation, and so there's really only, I would say, about $200,000 of recurring costs going to support needs identified by the department, which far exceed this list, but this is what we're limiting the recommendations for. And then we're showing about $750,000 in one-time allocations to address needs. Again, these are some of the critical needs, some things that we don't have a lot of control over. And also, some of this funding is going directly to help support some of the initiatives that are coming out of the council, goals and objectives, although a lot of those will be highlighted in the capital program. Also noted on here, and it'll be covered in the capital program, the capital fund is really general fund-supported, and there is 165,000 being allocated for some work to initiate the Gateway Beautification Project that I believe is in the council goals and objectives and highlighted in the CIP. And it's the 749 and the 165 that make up the drawdown of the reserve for, or fund balance for items that are not in those transfers. Okay? Moving along to just highlights on other funds, there's some recurring funding being proposed, recommended for including in the budget in the paramedic fund. This is both a combination of increased costs of the countywide communications JPA for fire emergency dispatch, as well as some increased costs for our ambulance billing contracts, and there's some revenues that offset that. The Recreation Revolving Fund, just a one-time allocation, but this is specifically to undertake the long-anticipated fee and cost recovery analysis for recreation programs to see kind of where we stack up, but more importantly, hopefully, where we have the opportunity to adjust fees going forward to hit the right cost recovery targets for the different programs, which will be really important so that the general fund does not have to be making additional contributions into the recreation programs as those costs tend to go up. There's some funding in Measure D one-time related to both wrapping up the main library project, as well as the Pickleweed Branch Library Project. This is probably not a super accurate representation in terms of recurring in one-time for Measure C, but Councilman McCurtis mentioned the NWP A, and between them, we have about $3.9 million between the core funding, which are programs that are managed by the city for the NWP A. And then there's the, our local program, the defensible space, that's money allocated to San Rafael for San Rafael-specific work. Measure A, open space, there's a project in this, in the capital plan related to, I think, resurfacing some tennis courts. I think this plan went to the Park and Rec Commission. I did note here, this is but one example where you'll probably see a slightly revised number in the June 2nd piece for some additional Measure A funding that we're anticipating, including in this plan, but didn't make this addition of the proposed budget. Parkland Dedication Fund, this is to help with a potential property acquisition that the council has been discussing. And then, want to highlight Measure P. Measure P is the new voter-approved parcel tax to support the library and community center. One of the council actions that will be in your resolution on June 2nd is to actually establish a new, in this case, a capital fund, because these funds are restricted per the citizens' initiative to the planning, design, and construction of the new library and community center. So we'll be creating the new capital fund. It is anticipated, on the revenue side, to generate about $6.3 million per year at the tax rate that was set. However, in year one, between recurring and one-time, we're looking at about $1.6 million in this year's budget. And again, that can be adjusted as we get into the planning process, but we're not going to be spending $6 million in the first year, but I think we got clear direction to move that project as quickly as we can, and so we'll make sure that the funding is there to support it. And then we'll cover the capital fund, I think, in the presentation, in just a time and then move through it. Internal service funds, these aren't very exciting in general, but they're critical to the overall support for the organization. This includes just the vehicles that are due for replacement next fiscal year, for which money has been collected over their useful life. There's also funding included in the budget through the Technology Fund for ongoing support of all of our enterprise software, from our financial system, permit system, outward-facing sort of digital infrastructure. Building Maintenance Fund, I did highlight the Liability Insurance Fund. This amount is almost entirely related to increases in our insurance premiums from, from year to year. And the liability fund, it's internal, it's entirely general fund-supported, so these are impacts. Worked with the fire chief and fire department, and this allocation for the Fire Equipment Replacement Fund supports much-needed replacement of fire hoses and nozzles and turnouts per the fire department's equipment replacement schedule. I'm gonna move on to the reserve and fund balance, and the council will recall that last year, at budget adoption, council adopted, approved an update to our general fund reserve policy, establishing a 15% reserve policy, and that's broken into both the emergency reserve of 10%, economic uncertainty is another 5%. Those two together are 15.9 million. And then there's also a $1 million infrastructure reserve as part of that. So together, this is about $16.9 million, which is provided for in this, in this budget proposal. I'm highlighting again here that as part of that policy, it included, I guess, some guidance language on priority uses for fund balance in excess of the reserve requirement, specifically for the unfunded liabilities, deferred maintenance, other funds requiring general fund support, capital projects, and then, as you heard, a limited amount is being proposed for reappropriation for one-time needs. So this just helps to convey that the recommendations of use of fund balance that's included in this budget are consistent with the guidelines that were provided in the budget proposal. Mentioned previously, the level of transfers, including the operating program transfers to Recreation and Measure E. Again, the $6 million of transfer, that does leave about $2.5 million of additional reserve in our fund balance, in our reserve for, you know, future projects and grant matches as, as those needs come up. So we're preserving the ability to apply those dollars as opportunities come up, and it leaves a small, modest, roughly half-million-dollar unassigned fund balance. I think this next slide, I apologize, might be a little tricky on this, but it basically shows the same information in terms of this year's budget, where we expect to end this fiscal year, and with the proposed budget, beginning-ending fund balances, our reserves of 16.9 million, the assigned/unassigned fund balance, so that's where the 3 million in excess of the reserve level is coming from. The $6 million that we're proposing in transfer is coming from available fund balances going into this fiscal year. So in summary, the budget is balanced with recurring needs being met, with recurring revenues, maintaining our reserve level, plus a little bit. And then, to the extent that we are allocating excess fund balance, it's, again, consistent with, with our, with our policy. Just a quick word on what the future holds. The, I will go to the middle of this slide, I think, consistent with information that was shared previously with the council last year through our labor discussions, but also in the early budget. The sort of three-to-five-year forecast does show a modest budget deficit gap appearing in '26-'27, so it would be in, in the following fiscal year. And that's largely attributable to downgrading the revenue estimates coming out of this fiscal year and into next fiscal year. $1.5 million is obviously significant. I'll note that that's about 1.3%, 1.4% of the budget, so if that were to come to pass, it does definitely put a, sort of some constraints in the budget two years out. But I will note, as your finance director, that we have the ability to mitigate a shortfall of that amount without too much of a, you know, significant impact either on service levels or staffing, but we have to watch it very closely because, as noted, this forecast is very sensitive to both our revenue assumptions, it's, it's also dependent, we have a tax measure renewal that expires at the end of this coming fiscal year, and so it's, you know, we have to guard against, you know, contingencies in that regard. And then the labor agreements that I mentioned will run two more years and will be in negotiations with our labor groups, and at that point, it's anticipated that we're going to be dealing with some potentially, some tight budgets, so some difficult conversations, but nonetheless, that's sort of what the, what the projections look like. On the bright side, I am going to note again, as the council is well aware and most, that we're not too, too far away from the, having paid off our unfunded pension liability, which will provide, well, on one hand, budgetary relief, I think Christine gets really upset when I use terms like that. The needs that we have in the community and on the aspirations far exceeds those resources, but at least it does give the council some flexibility. But as we've said before, we kind of have to get from here to there, and we've been tightening the budget. Costs have been increasing, we've been staffing up, we've been retaining staff, we've been successful, I think, in, you know, achieving accomplishments, particularly in, over the last three years strategic plan, but going forward, it's going to be increasingly a challenge to maintain our structural balance budget, absent the economy kind of coming out of whatever is next, and so we'll be watching that real closely. I have one more thing to cover, and then I'll pass it on to Joanna. I'm just going to summarize that this budget supports an authorized staffing level of 416.15 FTE, which is, you know, actually 0.2 FTE less, so there's no kind of net increase in the staffing levels. And one of the things that, I'll just highlight that, some of the changes that we are doing, but using existing vacancies to address some staffing challenges, reallocating a vacancy reallocating a vacant position in Community Economic Development to add a position in City Clerk's Office, particularly for records management support. We're just converting a vacant position in Public Works Department, but also adding a new senior project manager position, which is non-general fund. It'll be supported half from the capital fund and half from Measure P, but specifically to help spearhead that project, as well as other priority capital projects. Some changes in the Sustainability Division that we're doing with staffing and taking advantage of a long vacant position to accommodate that. And then, continue where appropriate to move a couple of positions from their fixed-term status to permanent and doing that and absorbing that within the department's budget. The last slide, I'll say, on the staffing is that this is our, you know, almost now 20-year trend. The city has probably since about 20, at least, full-time positions for the last 10 years been relatively flat. And we take advantage of having some fixed-term, flexible-duration positions. And we're still, you know, well below the peak staffing level that the city achieved back in 2007 and 2008. It's called doing more with less, and we're going to continue to do that. I'm going to take a breath and I'm going to ask Christine or the council if you're comfortable kind of jumping into the CIP and then taking questions and comments together, we can do that. So I'll do a quick transition here and then get, there we go. Oops, let's get just started. And Joanna.
Good evening, thanks for having me here tonight. I'm Joanna Kwok, Assistant Public Works Director and City Engineer. And tonight, I'll be presenting on our Proposed Fiscal Year '25-'26 Capital Improvement Program, CIP, starting with a quick overview of our CIP planning process before we dive into the Proposed Year One Fiscal Year '25-'26 of the CIP, and then recapping on our proposed next steps. So, starting off, the CIP program is a three-year planning tool that consists of our annual programs and projects and the respective funding sources and rough cost estimates. We're proposing that year one of the three-year CIP be appropriated with the city's annual budget adoption in June. On the right side are the four categories of capital improvement projects and programs. On the screen is considerations that we think about as we plan for our CIP. On the top row are considerations that help us come up with our comprehensive list of CIP projects. And once we have that list, we move through the remaining considerations on the second row, starting with our ranking process. On the screen are four of our ranking criteria that we've used in the past several years. We have made some adjustments with the review of various city departments to kind of clarify some of the language, to provide clarity on how we provide scores to the projects. And then, after the projects go through the ranking criteria, we then evaluate our available funding and staff capacity to help program the upcoming CIP. Here are the funding sources that currently support our CIP projects and programs. Diving into our Year One Fiscal Year '25-'26 CIP, this is a quick overview of our proposed 15.4 million for that, for the upcoming year, of which 31% is geared towards annual programs for ongoing needs on a yearly basis. And then, there's projects, which are one-time efforts. And we'll talk more about that throughout the presentation. On the right side is a pie chart that distributes the same proposed budget, but based on the different project categories. Next is a quick snapshot of our draft work plan, part two of that draft work plan. And jumping into our annual programs, these are really important because it gives us the opportunity to address either smaller efforts or smaller scopes of work that may not typically rank as high as other projects on the CIP. And it's really a way for us to address emerging priorities and especially inquiries we get from the public. And C Click Fix is like a great spot where we kind of look for data and we really encourage the public to kind of submit their requests so that we can analyze that as we develop our annual programs. Jumping into our first category, Buildings and Facilities, we have over 50 city-owned or occupied facilities that we maintain and rehabilitate. These are a list of some of the city facilities. Next fiscal year, we're proposing about 4.8 million, of which is funded by three main funding sources. 420, which is Measure E Essential Facilities, Fund 430, Measure P, which is one of our new funding sources that Director Navasio talked about earlier, and Fund 603, Building Maintenance. These are some recently completed building projects. We have about five rollover projects, including our citywide Buildings and Facilities Plan. And we also have our Downtown Library Project, which we anticipate will be complete in the next few months. We have 10 proposed upcoming projects, which will be spread across five of our city facilities, which is shown here. Next is our Parks category, which includes playgrounds, recreation equipment, park restrooms, and more. And our proposed budget is about 615,000. I think there will be some adjustments to this before the June 2nd council date, as Director Navasio mentioned earlier. We have three rollover projects, of which we anticipate finishing the first half of the next fiscal year. And three upcoming Parks projects. Next is our Storm Drain category. As you can see, half of that is really funded by grants. And a lot of it is really unfunded mandates that we have to address, like trash capture and trash load reduction. We've completed two projects this fiscal year. One's the B Street, and the other one's our Annual CMP Replacement Project. We have about nine rollover projects, and we're proposing to add one additional project this upcoming year, which is the Large Trash Capture Device Feasibility Study. And grant funding was secured through Make Stop, and it's to help us with compliance on unfunded mandates. We also have our Annual CMP Replacement Program, and these are some images of CMPs that we've replaced or repaired this year. Next, we have our Transportation category. A lot of our projects are grant-funded. And within the gas tax itself, we also have several funding sources, which are listed on the left-hand side. One of the projects that we're really keeping a close eye on is the South Marydale Project as we work with our grant agency to confirm whether the federal funds are available and when we may be able to move forward with the project. These are some of the projects we've completed in this category this year, including our large, our major pavement maintenance project. These are some of our rollover projects. We have seven. And for the Citywide Bike and Ped Plan, we actually recently had an open house last week, and we had a pretty good attendance, and we got a lot of good feedback. And we're really looking forward to the virtual meeting we're planning sometime in June. We're still narrowing down on the date, and we'll be doing outreach for it fairly soon. We have four proposed projects in this category, of which one of them is the Lincoln Avenue Safety Project. And for this project, we secured over 2 million of HSEP, which is Highway Safety Improvement Program funding. It's very exciting, and it's actually the second HSEP grant project we've, or that we've received funding for in the recent years. Next, I'm jumping into the annual programs we have in this category, which includes our city-led sidewalk repair program. Includes our shaving, and it also allows us to do upgrades to ensure ADA compliance. It also supports our pavement management program very well because it allows us to replace curb ramps or upgrade curb ramps in advance of areas where we need a more in-depth pavement restoration that would trigger the ADA improvements. Which leads into our PMP program, Pavement Management Program. We're anticipating having the three-to-five-year plan released this summer. And we're going to continue with our major maintenance project to ensure that we're trying to keep up with our PCI or Pavement Condition Index. Couple more annual programs we have in this category includes Bridge Maintenance. This program allows us to maintain both Caltrans-certified and non-Caltrans bridges. And our main, one of our main objectives for this program is to seek funding through Caltrans Highway Bridge Program so that we have funding to help maintain our bridges. Additionally, we have our Public Hillside and Roadway Stability Program, which allows us to do routine monitoring and maintenance of hillsides. Last but not least, we also have our Annual Road Safety Implementation Program. Our objective is to implement our local road safety plan, which we adopted back in April of last year, 2024. And you've seen some of the headway we've made with the AB43 implementation or application so that we were able to lower speeds in the downtown area. And before we conclude, I wanted to recap really quickly on what we're proposing for the upcoming fiscal year. Here's a quick snapshot of the 15.4 million that we're proposing for next year. As our future next steps, we plan to continue to adapt to city and community needs. We understand that reviewing our CIP process and our project list is really important as we adapt to changing trends and demands. And we're going to continue to apply for grant funding and hopefully secure a good amount. What I haven't mentioned yet is that we actually secured 14.8 million in grant funding just this year through ATP, Active Transportation Program, and then HSEP, which I mentioned earlier, along with TAM Safe Pathways and Region No Measure 3 Grant. We're going to continue to work on our annual programs and adjust them based on the needs that we've seen through like C Click Fix and other ways from hearing back from the public. And just continue adapting based on the soon-to-come goals and objectives and really ensuring that we're reviewing things from the lens of diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging.
There's, I think, one last slide to wrap up with, but if it's too quickly, otherwise, we'll go ahead and just, is that not sharing? Here we go, thank you. And again, the summary of the CIP is in the staff report, a couple pages, and also exhibit five of your agenda packet, has the entire three-year plan, again, with the focus on year one, which is the 15.4 million. And just in terms of our next steps, hope to receive some feedback from the council this evening. With that, and some additional revisions and fine-tuning, we'll be back in front of the council on June 2nd with a host of budget adoption actions, both our budget adoption resolutions, state-required GAN limit, as well as the formal adoption of the Capital Improvement Plan. We also have, on the June 2nd agenda, the Master Fee Schedule Update, which is the actions needed by the council to adjust fees across a host of program areas to support the revenues that are built in to this budget. And then, a host of actions that will establish tax rates that we communicate to the County Tax Collector's Office to also generate the tax revenues, specifically paramedics, library tax, special assessment districts. Believe the tax rate for Measure P was established by the ordinance itself, and so, we don't believe there's council action required to do that, but we're double-checking that to make sure that there's no hiccups along the way. With that, that concludes our presentation of the '25-'26 Proposed Budget. City Manager, Mayor.
Thank you, Paul, thank you, Joanna. Thank you for a great presentation and a really excellent staff report. The actual packet had all this information. You walked through it very clearly, and there was a lot of information. And it was on purpose to have this separate from when we'd look at the CIP and the goals and objectives, because it was so much information. So, I will turn to my colleagues for any additional questions. Let's go to the Vice Mayor.
I just have a couple of questions, and they all focus on page seven of your staff report. I'll start off with some detail-y questions, get to some conceptual, and then get to the ominous warning in the middle of this. So, starting the detailed question, Recreation Revolving Fund. Is it called a revolving fund because it, we collect revenue and then disperse it? Is that?
Not sure about the origin of the name. I do believe it's a little bit a misnomer in terms of revolving fund, in terms of what typically you would think of as a revolving fund. Basically, it's a special revenue fund where, yes, all of the revenue collected for our recreation programs is collected and is only used for recreation. So it is a special, I would call it the Recreation Special Revenue Fund.
Okay, all right, so I shouldn't be seeing too much, reading too much into the word revolving. But I am concluding by the $2.4 million that there's not enough money coming in, and so we need to use a general fund to make up the difference. Is that a fair conclusion?
Yes, as has been the case historically.
Right.
This is not a new.
So this is expected?
Yes.
Okay, and then the next line, Measure E. This is the general fund, too, making up for there not being enough Measure E funds.
No, this is slightly different. This is the result of, Measure E, as passed by the voters, is a general-purpose tax revenue. So Measure E actually flows into the general fund, like all the other sales tax. And then, council policy established that 1/3 of Measure E is allocated for essential facilities. So this is essentially, it would be a bigger number because 1/3 of Measure E is a lot more than 290,000. But we, the debt service for the essential facilities is also paid out of the general fund. And so, this $290,000 is just the 1/3 of Measure E net of the debt service and what's available to move to the Measure E Capital Fund to fund additional projects.
Okay, so this is Measure E General Fund, it's not General, General Fund. Okay, okay, all right, okay. I got that, so they're very different, the operating transfers. Okay, now, use of prior fund period balance, there's $6 million there that you use. Now, are these are one-term, one-time dollars that we are unexpected?
These are one-time dollars that, what I would say is, when we ended last fiscal year, we noted that there was $4 million in the fund balance that would likely be available for appropriation in this budget. And then, we're adding to that another $1.5 million from this year. So, I wouldn't say it's like unexpected. We've been doing these transfers over the last couple of years. What is unclear is our ability to continue to make these transfers in future years if we don't see, you know, positive results going forward. So we're really using down available fund balance to make one-time transfers as long as we're able to sustain that.
So, Councilmember Bushy, I just want to add an additional comment to Paul's response, which is, and he says, "We don't know what to expect in future years availability of making these transfers." The prior years, as he noted in his presentation, were much higher because of the salary savings, if you will, and the vacancy. So now that we're staffed up, we're seeing that number shrink. If we expect to be able to retain this incredible talent we have and maintain a low vacancy rate, we will not see these kind of transfers of fund balance going forward.
Which is a perfect segue into the ominous warning in the middle of the page. Is this the basis for your statement, "Significant additional funding will be required to support these unfunded liabilities"? That's what this is, and that would include- That's what this is. And that would include the operating transfer to the recreation fund?
Well, all of the, yeah, all of the uses of general fund dollars. Yeah, our ability to continue to support them will be contingent on, you know, future revenues being there. I would say the difference is, is that the revolving, the contribution to the recreation fund is sort of an annual recurring. So it's kind of in the baseline. And whether we can sustain that into the future at that level is both the function of availability of funds and our ability to potentially identify where we can raise revenues. The ability of, of the city and the general fund to continue to make these allocations from fund balance would be contingent on there being
Fund balance.
Above the reserve policy to do that.
Okay.
We kind of view them slightly different.
Slightly different cause, but ultimately the same result in that fewer dollars than we need.
Yes, and where I thought you were going to go is, is, you know, we also, it must be said that these transfers don't fully fund those liabilities. So there's unfunded liabilities over and above these to, in terms of our infrastructure needs, our stormwater needs, asset replacement needs. What we're doing is we're taking advantage of the opportunity to put some dollars aside towards those liabilities. Those liabilities exceed the city's current ability to fully address.
So notwithstanding the fact that we have a balanced budget, we have unfunded liabilities.
Yes, did not mean to misrepresent that in any way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Yuren Scolati, questions?
Yes, thank you. So one that I have is around staffing and everything totally makes sense. I wonder, I see that the volunteer coordinator position is not there any longer. I'm curious about the waste management coordinator. Is that under one of the new FTA's for Public Works? Or?
That's in the sustainability division, the grant funded, the waste coordinator position.
Okay, so I completely understand the logic and I really appreciate the, the thinking about it. I guess my request is to see we will be able to, whether it's the waste management coordinator or whether it's another position that can take into a small FTA for volunteer coordination, partnering maybe with some of the nonprofit groups in, in San Rafael to help us, you know, deliver some of the volunteer work that I think some people will be willing to do. And on that, I'm wrapping it to my next question, which is I saw, so there is like one of the improvements to like, I think, how do you call it, the welcome gateway entrance? For instance, if there will be some nonprofit groups that want to donate to create that space, will, as a council member, what would I tell them? I mean, is that something is going to be planned by Public Works and how will people, people be able to be involved with that? If they want to volunteer hours or funding?
So I'll respond to both questions and your request on how will the city continue to work on, you know, bringing in volunteers for cleanup days and all that sort of thing? I think there is capacity with that waste management coordinator position to support that. And, and there are other opportunities to your point about partnering with organizations like CVNL. So staff will be considering what's the best way to do that, the most efficient and effective way to do that. Your second question, my goodness, remind me, please.
Around the welcome gateway.
Oh, so, so recognizing that's a really important council priority. We've heard that a couple of times from the council in recent study sessions, staff is working on developing kind of a proposed scope. Because there's many things that could be done. Yes, most of these will be public, public works projects, but we'll be looking for more input from the council on specifically, you know, what type of project? There's lots of options, so. But as it relates to nonprofits participating, I think it's a, it's a great opportunity to think more about how that would be. When it comes to dollars, we don't have a fundraising mechanism to receive money directly from a nonprofit. But I think we should always be exploring these partnerships with nonprofits to figure out if there's ways that they can and want to contribute to them. So we'll do that outreach.
Great, thank you. So my other question is, I really appreciate Public Works with all the pump stations and all the fixing because we definitely need them. As we have the C-level rights adaptation plan that I believe the feasibility study is going to be presented soon to the council, are we putting any of that execution into the budget? Or is that something that is going to come later based on the plan?
I think that's going to come later, once we have more information available so that we can actually quantify what the needs, like both costs and capacity would be.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you. And then my last one is around the grant funding. I know that the county has a new, or they are hiring a new grant manager. Can we get support from them when we are looking at grants? How is that collaboration going to work? It's a rhetorical question.
We're very excited about that collaboration. I've talked with county executive Derek Johnson about that and how there might be partnership opportunities with the city and county. And he has been very generous in extending that there will be opportunities for that. So I don't think that person has been hired, but once they are, we'll definitely be reaching out.
Great. Okay, thank you so much. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurt, questions?
Thank you. Have a couple of questions. Great presentation. It is super complicated. I also have a question around the staffing. I'm a little, it's good that we're at the point of being basically fully staffed. Cause last time it was not a realistic savings per se. So it's great to see that. I also know in our next conversation around goals and objectives and, and our big wish list, we might need more staffing. I'm, I'm concerned, so it's sort of a question or rhetorical, are we looking at whether we might be needing to increase that staffing actually based on where we're coming? I'm actually surprised we're not putting more staffing needs in there based on what we know, based on the fact that we have a huge list.
So it's a, I'll start this off, Paul, please fill in if I miss anything here. It's a, it's a complicated, multifaceted question. So at this point, stat, we are not recommending any additional headcount FTE. And that's a very strategic decision or recommendation. The ongoing FTE, just even adding one individual staff person, that the compounding cost of that one position kind of defies some like common sense logic, but it, it really is very significant to add staff. We would love to add staff. What we're trying to balance from a risk perspective is adding staff is an ongoing cost, right? A lot of what we can do with this general fund balance is one time, so we can feel comfortable to the extent that this recommendation is, is, you know, with the federal uncertainty, with sales tax, not knowing where that's going to go. Those are ongoing monies and we see a lot more risk in the field for those dollars. And so what we're trying to do as an alternative is innovate, as you saw at the Together San Rafael showcase, find ways to partner and leverage other resources and other agencies. As your city manager, I would not recommend, we are not recommending now that we add any actual headcount. Because when we do the projections and out years, we are, because of the investment, so here's the, here's the rub, here's the trade-off. Because that the county, I mean, apologies, the city council prioritize increasing compensation as our recruitment and retention strategy in their last round of bargaining, that was a significant, large amount of ongoing money. So as a result of that, what we're balancing is that in future years, we are looking, we are looking at some degree of potential deficit of the general fund. I cannot recommend to you that we add staff at this point without having more information and knowing that we're looking like we're going to have to cover the next couple of years with some carryover one-time dollars. So we're carrying some risk there. That is, that is really the rationale behind why we are not recommending adding headcount as much as we would like to do that. So Paul, did I, anything you want to add?
If I could, I might add two things. It is an ambitious list, although the city manager's direction to staff at least has been to not be putting things on the list that we're not able to reasonably accommodate within our existing resources. But that does mean reprioritizing and reallocating resources to higher priority needs. So that's sort of the first level before you get to increasing capacity with additional staff. The other thing, I'm just going to use this question as an opportunity to point out, there's another area that is, I guess, on the positive side. The council is well aware of the development pipeline that we are looking at. We have intentionally not built into this budget projections of all the development related permit fees and other revenues that those projects will bring to the city. In part because we're assessing what the staff capacity needs to actually get those projects through and approved so that we don't want to put the revenue in here, spend it on other stuff and then not have the resources to be able to support that development. And then see whether that development, depending on the timing, will also in turn be part of the overall formula for where some of the revenues are going to need to come to address the service level impacts of the, of the new development. So it's a, I think I would say it's a very incremental approach to adding resources. And there's more parts I think need to be played before we have a good.
Absolutely. And, and I should have clarified, I'm not, I'm not suggesting hiring full-time staffing, but using the one-time staffing to support as long as we have fully, or fully budgeting for that perspective. Absolutely. I think that's, that's really important. As always, we talk about the EMS paramedic tax. It's now becoming more and more critical in terms of the priority for that. And I'm wondering how we're, if we're actually going to be approaching that this coming fiscal year or beyond?
So I'll take that. So one of the conversations that we will be having, I know everyone pivoting over here, this side, as my voice fellows from the speakers. So we're going to be looking at pulling together a comprehensive revenue renewal strategy later this summer. And we'll be bringing that back to the finance subcommittee later this year. And that will include, you know, conversation around when will we go for an increase in the paramedic tax? Or, you know, the renewal of measure D, which we'll have to look at doing next year. So that's on the work plan and we'll be back to you with that later this year.
Right, thank you. In terms of our, I alluded to it when I, when we did our updates at the beginning of the meeting, that number of our nonprofits are, are very tied to state and federal funding and are at high risk right now. And there are safety net. And so if that safety net falls for us, do we anticipate more need for providing support for our community? That's not going to be filled through the organizations that now won't have the supports? Sorry, that's, I mean, it's almost a rhetorical, I mean, it's.
It's something we're thinking a lot about. I think I reflect upon how we pivoted and shifted resources and how we provided services. And we, we shifted to providing services that we had never before during the pandemic. I think it's really a policy question. And when we know more about what those gaps are, where, where the county might be able to fill, fill in from a Health and Human Services Agency perspective, and we'll be talking with them closely about what those gaps are. I think when I say it's a policy question, it really is like, what is the role of the city? And I think that would be a conversation we would bring back to the council to have. One of the things that the strategic planning process will provide is regular updates to the council and the community on emerging priorities. So similar to, you know, any of the other things that come in our purview last year, we didn't expect to be doing enforcement around illegal cannabis and illegal hemp. So we had to shift gears and make, make way to make that a priority because it was pretty urgent in the community. So similarly, if, if there was something that was urgent, we would have that conversation. It would mean reallocating dollars and making a different policy decision around this budget, as well as other work plan items would have to shift or defer in order to make space to, to help support our nonprofits.
And that's when people say, you know, what keeps you up at night? That's the one that I'm concerned about right now. And then in terms of our CIP, it's great. I want to make sure I, I understand, and I know I've looked at this a couple of times this other years. The funding we're doing this year does not mean that project is happening this year. Or does it mean that's happening this year? Cause there are some projects that I know are happening this year and we're funding. But there's others that I am assuming it's not enough to actually implement that project. And we're just contributing to the, the line that's going to, it's going to need to happen.
That's a great question. I think usually for fiscal year 25, 26, if it's in year one, our goal is to at least get started on some of the projects. But as you saw in the presentation, a lot of them are actually rollover projects because they're just multi-year, they're really large projects. We did consider like, you know, we also named a couple of projects like the downtown library, boy park, pickleweed, peacock gap, like some of those products are ending like earlier in the fiscal year. So we take that into account as we, you know, kind of budget or program in like new projects that we're going to get started. We did start programming some of the grant funding that we secured into year two and three because of like capacity reasons, like we're, and just the timing of the grants, like we're able to start like a later time.
Right. It might be, you know, going back and looking at it, it may be helpful just to, a little asterisk. We need to have three years of funding or we need to reach X amount of funding, minimum funding, just so people are clear. Cause not, if you're not into the day-to-day, you're like, wow, it only costs that much to do that? That's great. So, but we know it's a lot more. Right, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill?
Mayor Kate, and thank you Director Navazio and Joanna for walking us through this very, it's a lot of material and you moved through it very quickly. Going and actually building on council member Kurt's question around CIP. At the, the, the bottom it says, it said 15.4 million. But if you had to characterize in terms of rollover from last year, how much are we actually talking about in terms of expenditure that would land in this next fiscal year?
That's a great question. We have done some of our assessments and it's going to be part of, is it June or are we doing it later?
It'll be after year end, probably September, one week back and forth.
So we do have an assessment. It's about 10 to 12 million that we'll be rolling over. So the amount of funding that we're, you know, going to be handling, so to speak, in year one will be about, can't do math, like 20, 20, 25, 27-ish?
I don't know if it's a coincidence, but this year's CIP budget was about 33, 35 million. And so with 10 or 12, you're basically looking at about 20 million a year in capacity. And so another 10 will roll and add to the 15. But I would just give kudos to joining the team for not just putting all the money into one year's budget that they, is, they don't have the capacity to, to spend. So the idea is to, not so much pay as you go, but the projects that need to get started, get that funding in place. And it's through the three-year plus plan that you see the full funding across the project schedule.
I just, that actually responds to two new questions then, which are, so just to confirm what I heard, which is that in terms of how Public Works is, is staffed, we can really only spend about 25 million responsibly in terms of oversight of contractors and subcontractors? Is that, did I hear that right?
I'm going to defer to the director. That, that's a very blunt number because it, it depends on the project. It depends on the funding sources. It depends on the timing of other things coming together, but.
Yeah, it just depends on what the projects are. Some projects don't cost that much, but take a lot of staff time. So sure, like on a good year, we can spend 20 to 25 million, but it just totally depends on what the projects are. But the goal, the goal is, is, is our plan over the next couple of years is to try to right-size that. Because as Paul mentioned, we had, you know, over 30 million last year, but we clearly didn't spend that much since we're rolling over so much. So ideally, we're going to get to the number that's. So ideally, we're going to get to the number that's, that's real, and that might be less than 20 million. But we'll, you know, we're kind of seeing how that goes.
Gotcha. Thank you. That makes a ton of sense, of course. I just heard 25 is this envelope. So thank you for that.
I was going to say, I think we've also been in a pretty good position in trying, feeling, filling some of our vacancies. So we've been able to kind of deliver more projects. I think like Director Miller mentioned, I think we probably are around with the 20 or maybe a little bit lower in terms of being at the point where we're fully staffed. Because I think we're also pulling resources from consultants and other teams that are not from the CIP. So we're really trying to like help each other out and deliver products for the public and for the city.
Awesome.
I just wanted to add that this may be stating the obvious, but the amount of dollars spent is not necessarily directly related, I would say, to the success of the department executing the projects. I mean, Director Miller stated it well, but the complexity and the moving parts of how much time it is even to apply for a grant and the unknown things that come upon these really complex projects and the amount of community engagement. I just want to appreciate April and her team for how much they are doing to make sure that the community has a voice and is understanding these projects in a way that I think in prior years we haven't. And that's been a council priority. So making staff time to make that happen is, I would also say, as important as getting the projects completed.
Absolutely. Well, where I was going to go with it and is, you know, as, I'm just trying to fit this into my head. And I'm an untrained engineer, but when I think about the unfunded and the unknowns, when I think about storm drain master plan, what that number is likely to come out is going to be a lot. When I think about how much it's going to cost recurring to actually get our pavement index increased. When I think about sea level rise, when I think about all these projects that are going to require, you know, this is, these are not 25 billion, these are 200, some 250 million. So I just, you know, I'm just imagining, how many years out can we look to say, what would our capacity need to look like for the kinds of complex and big projects that we're going to have to do? So I'm, I'm just trying to get my head around it, and I'm not necessarily looking for a hard answer, but I, I do know that we're going to need capability to, to bring those to, to life.
I could offer a soft answer. I'll refer back to Assistant City Manager Stefanski's comments about a revenue renewal and other, both tax measure and other revenue sources, I think, are critical as we see the development move through. Community and academic development and public works are assessing and evaluating our fee structure to make sure that we are capturing the revenue that we so desperately need in order to meet the growth needs, not just the current and existing needs, but the service needs are increasing. So that's another part of our long-term strategy.
Thank you. I have two more planned questions. One of them is around federal dollars, and I heard in the presentation, Mary Dale is one that is, feels jeopardized. Are there any other regular or currently what we believe are funded projects that could be in jeopardy? That, that are tied to federal funding?
That is the only one that we're aware of.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's possible there may be some sustainability sea level rise funding that could be at risk. But as soon as we know, we'll let you and the community know. Hopefully not.
Okay, thank you. And then this is just more of like a, a high-level question. You know, most folks out in the community who have their own household budgets or work for companies, everyone is looking at uncertainty. And in terms of overall risk, I saw in the staff report that we're assuming that our sales tax revenues will remain flat. Does that feel like the right level to, to look at? We don't, in, in other words, I'm, I'm trying to imagine and contemplate a worst-case scenario where it's, it's worse than just flat. Where would we, where would we go? I mean, is that the point where we start to say we would start contemplating, looking at moving into the economic uncertainty 5%? How, how would we start to activate and look at that? And what, what would you recommend we go first? And I know it's a counterfactual because we have not encountered it yet, but how would you, you know, think about that?
Yeah, so I would say the reserve for that economics uncertainty is, is there to assist. What I would say, though, is that that reserve generally utilized like within the fiscal year, if we're looking at the revenues and, and they don't materialize, we are, be dipping into that reserve to get through it. We're not going to, I would, I would not recommend, we would not recommend using that reserve because next year's revenue, the following year's revenues aren't coming back. So you're not using that reserve to sustain. You're doing it to get you through until either there's a correction or more importantly, we adjust the budget to within it. So it's really for short-term revenue volatility in that regard. And just again, all the more reason, I'm hoping that that's a conservative projection on our part. And, and we'll, we'll see.
I'll just add that we do monitor the sales tax on a quarterly basis. We work with HDL, who is watching this extremely closely, maybe more so than ever. It, it does make me feel a little bit better that their original projections were one-ish percent increase. And then they came back to us a couple of months ago and said, no, no, we need to, we need to call it flat. But if those numbers start looking less favorable, that would be something we would bring to the council and make an update throughout the year.
If I could add one more comment to that. Also, I think for us, one of our benefits, as you know, we have a pretty diverse economic base in terms of sales tax generators. It's important to support that. Anecdotally, in our last meeting with our sales tax consultants, you know, a lot of cities are seeing decline, and I think they coined the phrase "flat" is the new growth. So if it's flat, you're, you're doing good. Say that half joke, but that's, that's a very different perspective on, you know, sales tax just keeps, you know, increasing, increasing, increasing. But it's also reflective of the uncertainty that the, you know, consumers have about what's going to be happening with, with pricing and, and so I think there's going to be a period of retention. But hopefully things will, but we'll see. Thank you.
Councilmember Micah.
Yes, I just have a quick question. So I'm thinking also about consumers and how they are going, like, doing purchases online. And I believe that our city gets a small percentage of those sales taxes. And I'm curious to see if, as a city, there is anything we can do to increase that.
So that's a complicated question for another evening. I would just say that, and I'll make sure that, it's not that we get a set percentage, but how much we get in sales tax revenue from internet sales depends on how that particular provider is structured, right? Whether they have bricks and mortar in town, whether they have bricks and mortar in the state of California, or whether they're just a completely virtual operation. But to really answer your question, and it speaks to some other work to be done, I would say any one city is really hard-pressed to sort of move the needle on that. It's really a collective effort with cities, making sure that the transition of our retail economy to a e-commerce isn't at the expense of the critical revenue that funds police and fire and basic services, which is really what is the danger.
Great, thank you very much. We got our orders to partner with other cities. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have three follow-up questions, and one of these I asked at the finance committee, but I think it's important. So I know we're, you're bringing forward the master fee schedule at the next meeting, but are the potential increases that are being considered incorporated into this budget?
They are.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that for the community because it's a little bit out of sync, but I just.
Yep. Again, maybe with the possible exception of some of the increases in the permit and building fees. And again, that's in anticipation of future development. So I think there's revenue yet to be gained, but generally speaking, yes.
Thank you. This question might be for ACM Stefanski because you're talking about looking at potential other revenue sources. So TOT transient occupancy tax, will that also be considered? As I understand it, that's something we could also influence.
Correct. Yeah. And that's something that, as we kind of pull together that strategy, we'll be looking at what the options are for the council to consider. So TOT, but then also potentially real property transfer taxes as well.
So when that study is done, it won't affect this budget, but would the potential, would we be able to make policy decisions or go forward and it would influence the following fiscal year? I'm, I'm just trying to get the timeframe, like.
Yes, if the council were to choose to place a measure on the ballot for the June 2026 election, then that would take effect for the fiscal '26, '27.
But like to follow up on Councilmember Kurtz, the EMT or TOT, would that also be for the fiscal year? Or would that take another year to?
If it were to go in June, it would be for the next fiscal year, but nothing would be for the current fiscal year that's before.
I know that. I'm just trying to think as, you know, it's really appreciative to have the, the forecast over the following year. So just trying to, okay, that's helpful. We look forward to that study. And the last question, this is going to be a tough one. I know we're always keeping our eyes and ears open for unfunded mandates from the city because, from, I mean, sorry, from the state to the city. So I'm curious if staff has heard of anything looming out there. I think about that every time we have the stormwater capture drainage system, which was passed years ago. But I'm, I'm curious if any of your colleagues, if you've heard anything coming at the state level that will be passed on to the cities that we'll have to fund because we're mandated to do so, but no funding will be a part of it.
We're not aware of any specific, although those things tend to pop up out of the blue after the May revise and then the state slashes funding and says it's on the cities to pick it up. But we'll continue to keep an eye on that.
Yeah, and, and we will too. I mean, I know Tam looks at that. We look a lot at the state legislation and what's coming forward. So just, if anyone hears anything, hopefully not. Okay, well, those are my three questions because my colleagues have always asked. Awesome. Great question. So I will turn it to the public to see if they have any other questions or comments on this item. Not seeing anyone who wants to race down and speak with us on this item, I will close the public comment and bring it back for commentary by the council and then hopefully a motion on this item. I'll start with the vice mayor.
Expansive, rigorous analysis, detail, forward-looking, forecasting our, our weaknesses, strategies to overcome them, as always, you know, just awesome. This is where it all comes together. And, and you tied it up and put a nice bow on it with a whole lot of little warnings hanging off of it. So thank you for a great presentation. I look forward to the final package at the June 2nd meeting.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz, any comments?
Likewise. All good. It's always good to be able to see the dollars and see what, how we did last year in terms of our budgeting and, and the planning forward. I mean, I think it's very, very helpful and necessary. And the, the tie-in to our goals and our objectives is, it's so important because that really is what drives the dollars, and our dollars match our priorities. And so it was sort of like, it's like a foreshadowing of the next meeting. So thank you for the update. And I am, you know, I think we're all watching what's happening statewide and federal-wide. And we may be having to look at things in the future a little bit differently. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill, any comments?
Thank you, Mayor Kate, and thank you Director Navazio and Joanna for the presentation this evening. And I know that although you two presented, it required the entire department, all the departments to, to be considered in how this, this came together. I concur with the vice mayor's characterization. The only thing I might add is the, the, the values that Councilmember Kurtz mentioned, one that came out very clearly in the presentation, is that this council made a very big decision, supported by the city manager's office, specifically Assistant City Manager Angela Pignone-Robinson, Robinson-Pignone, and getting all of these labor agreements into place. This was a huge lift, and we knew that if it was successful, we would have all of the staffing positions filled. And, you know, based on our last meeting, from Director Sanchez, who's in the audience, we are, that it is working. It is going to plan. And because it is going to plan, things are a little bit tighter. But I am, I am very pleased that we have the financial resources to be able to find ways to support it, as Vice Mayor Bushy indicated, with little warnings. But there's ways that we can do it. And I appreciate the cleverness of this staff, but also previous staff in council that put us in position to be able to do this kind of thing, as well as the community. The sales tax, all the property tax are funded by our community. So we hope we are marshaling it well, and this tonight's report, I think, supports that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Yaren Skoladi.
Yes, I want to echo the sentiment. Thank you so much for the report and all the work behind it, coordination with all the departments. I mean, this is really tricky, especially when you're thinking go for three years, although this is the buy it for next year. But I am, I think it really reflects the complexity of how many projects we want to do and how many we can do. So one thing that I also appreciate the, the vision that we have around equity and the environment for all the projects that we do. One that I, that I haven't seen, but I think is part of the project, is where we talk about the, like, the tree inventory or like the green spaces. So that would be my only comment, you know, just to, to see that it gets reflected and how we can collaborate with the community to maybe support, you know, some of the work that the city does. Because again, I know we have limited resources and there is much need. But thank you, really appreciate it. Looking forward to the next one, next month, to the final one.
Thank you, and thank you to all the comments that my council colleagues have made. They're all on point in terms of the amount of depth, appreciating the amount of depth and breadth of the work that has been done, and also highlighting that these numbers fall out of the goals and objectives. So when we have that, at the tying those together, so those are where the priorities are, and we recognize there are sometimes emerging priorities. And there's sometimes groups of folks who have a very specific priority that they are interested in. And what the council continues to do is to look and balance all of those many desires in our community. It's all about trade-offs. And once again, you've done a masterful job of looking at the huge need out there and then looking at the appropriate trade-offs and bringing forward a draft budget. That really reflects where the city wants to go and is going to continue to go. So thank you for a fantastic presentation this evening. With that, I would entertain a motion on this item, please.
I'll make a motion to accept the report.
Madam Speaker, do you need us to read out the, that would be great. Yeah. Read it out. Councilmember Kurtz, can you read them?
Sure.
At the bottom, recommended action, accept the report.
Recommend accept the report related to the preliminary citywide proposed budget for fiscal year FY 2025, '26 and provide direction to staff to inform the preparation of the final proposed FY 2025, '26 budget for adoption at the city council meeting on June 2nd, 2025.
Thank you. Move in second and roll call, please. Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yaren Skoladi.
Aye.
Mayor Kate. Aye. That motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Our last agenda item before we adjourn is open time for public expression. Are there any comments from the public on anything on, not on tonight's agenda? Not seeing anyone racing down, I will close that open time for public expression and adjourn this meeting. Good night, everyone.